testing mic check, testing, testing mic check, testing, testing mic check, mic check testing, mic, mic testing, mic testing, mic, mic testing, mic, mic we are testing the mics there is some cool robots here mic check testing
Testing.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for coming. I know we are not at board announcements. You guys did a fantastic job, so I'm just gonna squeeze that in there. So thank you so much for greeting those lovely notes. My name is Makita Lewis. I'm the vice president and I'll be chairing tonight's meeting. Colleagues, can I have a motion to reconvene in the public session of the meeting? Thank you. A favor need post? Motion carries. Come and please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is our Board of Education announcements. Do any of my colleagues have any announcements that they would like to make?
I do. Thank you very much. Good evening, New Rochelle. And two days ago, we honored School Related Professionals Day in our school district. And I just want to thank all of our school-related professionals who come and work in the best interest of children and make our schools the best that they can be. And also, in this season of Thanksgiving, I am thankful for have been re-elected to the New Rochelle School Board. And I want to thank everyone for donating time, rations, and goodwill and for fellowshipping with our New Rochelle families, friends, and neighbors. Have a wonderful Thanksgiving holiday.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Anyone else?
I'm just looking forward to seeing you out there for the parade Saturday.
Okay. Thank you. Next on our agenda is our superintendent's report. Dr. Reynolds, I'll throw it to you.
Thank you very much, Vice President Lewis, and to our board members. I thank you for being here this evening. Good evening to our community. We should have more here at the high school if we're gonna have this type of a turnout to the board meeting. I am very happy to see all of you and to our community members at home. To our students, and I see that quite a few of them have gone, it is not often, I, so I'm gonna interpret it this way, that I get theme music as I walk in. And what's better than Duke Ellington's "A Train"? So for those of you who are members or listeners of WBGO, it doesn't get any better than that. So let's give our students a round of applause. To start off my update, just last night, Board President Ionuzian I spent some time at Harrison's Middle School with about 78 other superintendents and their board presidents, along with 26 elected New York state legislators, fighting for more money for our school district. The message that we walked away with last night was one of preserving what we have in place, protecting public education, and promoting who we are as public educators. We wanted to ensure that money intended for public education stays in public education. So that is our agenda, and that was the discussion that we had last night. I had the privilege of sitting at the table with State Senator Shelley Mayer. State Senator Andrew Stewart-Cousins was in attendance. All of our representatives were there: Steve Otis, Amy Paulin, Natalia Fernandez, along with other individuals from Dutchess County, Orange County, Rockland County, and Westchester. So please know the advocacy for our students so that programs such as these continue are at the forefront of what it is that we're looking for. This is a reminder, and this is something, it's a revisitation of something that I've shared with the community, I think as recently as August 20, I'm sorry, October 23rd of this year. The New York State Department of Education and New York State School Boards Association created the Office of the Ex-Officio Student Board of Education with aims to recognize the value of including students' voices on the school boards and thus empower students by giving them a voice in the decisions that affect their education and well-being and the operation of schools. It is also, it also provides an opportunity for young New Rochelians to build skills of habits of civic engagement. Pursuant to the state statute, ex-officio students, student board members are entitled to sit with the board at all public board meetings and public hearings of the board and may participate in other board activities and responsibilities at the discretion of the board, including providing valuable input on the strategic plan and district goals by representing the perspectives and needs of the student body during discussions and planning sessions. Ex-officio student board members do not have a voting right. They also may not, may not attend executive sessions nor any other meetings or hearings that are not open to the public. I am stating this again for the record. At no time should questions or statements from the public be directed to the ex-officio student board member, nor should any ex-officio student board member be directly or indirectly referenced by public comment. In protection of our young people, it is asked that we commit to preserving the mental and emotional safety of our ex-officio student board member, and I'm asking our community to respect that. If you do not, I will take all of my powers to remove your speaking opportunity by cutting off your mic and, if we need to, removing you from the meeting. Our students are why we are here, and our students are who we are going to protect. This past Saturday, 15 New Rochelle High School students attended the 38th Annual Historically Black College and University College Fair at Riverbank State Park. And of the 15 students in attendance, four students received onsite acceptance letters and scholarship opportunities. We would like to congratulate the four students. We would also like to thank Mr. Joe Andrews for putting this event together and providing this opportunity to our students over the past three years. Furthermore, we would like to thank our chaperones who ensured that our students had a wonderful experience at the event: Janaye Foster, Miriam DeSim, Chalise Dupree, Josephine Dobbins, and Iman Dupree. Something that you may have noticed when you walk in, it seems a little brighter in here this evening. You know, I don't know if the light is reflecting off of anything, but you know, take a look over to your left if you're sitting in the audience. Our varsity soccer players, families, coaches, teachers, and supporters celebrated the team's Section 1 co-championship at a ceremony on Tuesday here at New Rochelle High School. The City School District of New Rochelle Athletic Director Joseph Donaldson The City School District of New Rochelle Athletic Director Joseph Donaldson praised our players and families for an outstanding season, and he said, quoted, "Our parents are the primary educators of our students, our most valuable asset. We owe you a huge debt of gratitude for supporting your student athletes and for being coaches as well. We noticed that you're there cheering on our teams, recognizing our players, and that goes a long way." So, congratulations again to the players, coaches, families, and our community on this great achievement. So, let's give our soccer team a round of applause. Now, there's some strange gentlemen standing in the back of the room. Any of our soccer pla, yeah, they look behind them. I love it. Any of our soccer players in the room, please raise your hand, come forward and be recognized. Just, just stand over by, just stand there by your trophy. Stay there, yep. I'm not done yet. In a first for New Rochelle High School, New Rochelle High School Senior and Soccer Team Captain and goalie Gerald Velazquez is the New York State Public High Schools Athletic Association's Section One Boys Soccer Player of the Year. Gerald's a three-time All-Section Player, two-time All-State, and the league's Most Valuable Player. He is nominated for All-Region and All-America Teams as well. If he is selected as an All-America Team member, Gerald will be distinguished as one of the top fifty high school players in the nation. In addition to Gerald, Adrian Medina and Jose Miguel Ayala were named All-Section Players. Let's give them a round of applause. Julian Osagera and Damian Torres received All-Section Honorable Mentions. Let's give them a round of applause. Nicholas Canales and Ryan Pierre-Louis received All-League nominations. And on the adult side, that guy there in the middle, Coach Garcia was named League Coach of the Year. He was also a finalist for Section One Coach of the Year, and we are so proud of the work that you have done as a team and for the community. And Coach Garcia and I were having a conversation earlier this evening, and he said, "I didn't do anything. I don't deserve this. It was all the young men who did it." But I have to remind him that our students will only live up to the expectations we set for them. Our students will only follow behind someone who they know is pushing through the way to lead the way for them. So, let's give our team, our coaches, I see Coach Barbosa there. Let's give all of our coaches and our team members a round of applause. Congratulations, everyone. Now, I believe we keep the gold ball right here forever, but the cup only stays with us for a year. And we also get to keep the plaque in perpetuity, so that is the hardware that they're bringing to New Rochelle. Let's give them another round of applause. Thank you so much, gentlemen. We're getting back to the community stuff. This time of year is for giving thanks and for sharing our blessings with our neighbors who may be experiencing a time of need. I'd like to share a few resources for both giving and receiving this holiday season. Our school district partners with Feeding Westchester to host a monthly food pantry at the Isaac E. Young Middle School, and it's usually held on the second Wednesday of the month. The food pantry is from four until five p.m., and you can find the full list of dates on our website. In addition to our distributions at Isaac E. Young, Feeding Westchester has resources throughout Westchester County, and I believe, under the leadership of Dr. Artiles, and with the support and the attention of our Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, Ms. Joan Garone, we are looking to build an experience for food insecurity here at the high school, so more to come. Our Hope Community Services hosts food pantries on Wednesdays from nine a.m. until twelve noon and two p.m. until four p.m. at Fifty Washington Avenue in New Rochelle. Interested parties should register with Hope Community Services. Our elementary schools are also partnering with Hope Community Services on food and toy drives this holiday season. Families should check Parent Square for opportunities to donate. The New Rochelle Office for the Aging serves low-cost hot and bag lunches to New Rochelle seniors who have registered in advance. You can contact the center at this phone number, nine one four two three five two three six three. Again, nine one four two three five two three six three for information on how to join. Families who are wishing to sponsor donated Thanksgiving meals from Sugarplums can do so for eight dollars per meal. So, please contact Sugarplums at nine one four 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 seven three two seven nine. That's nine one four 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 seven three two seven nine. Or pay them a visit. You can just leave eight dollars, and they will donate a meal to somebody who comes in who's in need. And whether you're interested in donating or support or are in need of assistance, please use these resources to directly contact the organizations that we mentioned. Your generosity, compassion, and commitment to our neighbors embody the spirit of the holiday season and strengthens our entire community. So, this Saturday, two days from today, we're going to kick off the world-famous New Rochelle Thanksgiving Day Parade. So, if you don't feel safe in going to New York City, if you want to have an experience and see some big balloons, please come out to the parade, which begins at ten o'clock right on North Avenue in New Rochelle. But before that, in order to brave the weather, you should be well-fed. So, this Saturday, to kick off the parade, bring your team, your club, your family, your friends to the annual Pancake Breakfast right here in New Rochelle High School at the House Four Cafeteria. You can enjoy pancakes, bacon, sausage, and bagels for the low, low price of just five dollars. You know they're getting rid of the penny. I was gonna say four ninety-nine, but, you know, five dollars. This will be served by our school administrators, principals, and school board members. It's a perfect spot to meet up and grab a coffee or a bite to eat before heading to the parade. The Pancake Breakfast is on Saturday again from eight a.m. until nine thirty here in the House Four Cafeteria and is sponsored by the New Rochelle Fund for Educational Excellence. And that leads us to a reminder. Schools and offices will be closed next Thursday and Friday, November twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth, for the observation of Thanksgiving. There will be a half-day of school for all students, faculty, and staff on Wednesday, November twenty-sixth. So, all individuals, whether child or adult, will have a half-day next week, Wednesday. And that, Madam Vice President, concludes my report. I'm sorry for the length, but I think a lot of information there can help us to feel good. So, back to our regular meeting.
Not a problem, Dr. Reynolds. Thank you, and congratulations again to all of our students. Next up on our agenda are our discussion items, and tonight we have a presentation by New Rochelle High School. So, Sue, do you want to set the stage?
Sure. Thank you very much. So, we have the pleasure of sitting in a room that, five years ago, was about four to five inches underwater, thinking about the work that has gone into making this space a space that is not only available to learning, but more especially inviting to our students. I want to thank Mr. Keith Watkins and our entire facilities team for putting this space together for us. But we are here in the New Rochelle High School library, and this evening, we are going to be introduced to our pathway of learning as it relates to what is not prescribed in the New York State learning standards, but what is surpassed in terms of availability and opportunity for our students and leads us down a pathway to even higher intellectual opportunities and performance on standardized tests and scores. Tonight, we're going to be led in that conversation by our high school senior administration, by our principal, Dr. Dagoberto Artiles. He's joined by our Assistant Principal, Ms. Zahida Amini, and our Assistant Principal, Ms. Cadet Simkins. So, tonight, we turn it over to Dr. Artiles.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone, Board of Education, New Rochelle community. As in tradition, we always introduce our student government, and they're going to be giving you a little summary of what had taken place in New Rochelle High School from September till today. There's a lot. We're a big, a big place. I have Carlos Del Aguila. He's our Class of Twenty Twenty-Six Student Government President. And also, for the first time in, I think, the history of the New Rochelle High School, the New Rochelle School District, we have a student representative on our student government representing the Huguenot Academy as well. So, you'll be able to meet her. She's making history tonight, as well as being the first. Carlos, come up.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Carlos Del Aguila, and I'm the Class of Twenty Twenty-Six Student Government President. This past June, we held our student government elections, in which we were elected to our full board. I will now give the rest of our wonderful student government the floor to introduce themselves.
Hi, everyone. My name is Alexia Watson, and I'm co-Vice President.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Madison Sedu, and I am also a co-Vice President. Unfortunately, our secretary, Emma Diaz, was unable to make it tonight, but she sends her best.
Hello. I'm Sophia Solomon, and I'm the treasurer.
Hello. My name is Olivia Sexton, and I am the student representative for Huguenot Academy.
Together, we will continue to work hard and collaborate with New Rochelle High School Administration to allow for the sustainability of the environment of excellence that our school is known for. We would like to thank Superintendent Dr. Reynolds for giving us an opportunity to meet here tonight and provide our community with an update on some of the amazing events and activities that have taken place at New Rochelle High School since the opening of the school. Our main goal is to continue to represent the student voice and bolster student life at New Rochelle High School. Therefore, we've had a very busy but productive last three months. We really can't believe it's already the end of November. We also want to welcome the next generation of New Rochelle High School students who may be in the audience, eh, in the form of elementary and middle school students. You'll all be in for a great next four years. Before we get into our monthly highlights, I will now be passing the mic to our lovely Vice Presidents Alexia and Madison to share some notable school and student achievements.
Congratulations to the NRH students that were accepted and participated in the Twenty Twenty-Five New York SSMA All-State Festival in Rochester, New York. Also, congratulations to the entire symphonics band and vocal ensemble for having the highest showing of any school in Twenty Twenty-Five All-State, All-County Performance at SUNY Purchase. The New York, the New Rochelle High School was awarded School of Distinction and School of Excellence by the New York State Public High School Athletic Association for Section One. These awards recognize our students' athletes' high GPAs collectively on each team. We had twenty-three teams recognized as scholar-athlete teams. Continuing the theme of athletic success, congratulations to our boys varsity basketball team for winning the Golden Ball at the county center.
Congratulations to our boys varsity soccer for also winning the Gold Ball as co-champion for the Twenty Twenty-Five school year. The NRHS Science Research Program has cemented itself as one of the premier high schools' research programs in the nation and, and the world. The program achieved the maximum amount of finalists allowed at the Regeneron International and Science and Engineering Fair, who were Carlos Del Aguila, Scarlett Hartzman, and Corey Seelenfront. Corey placed first in his category mathematics and is currently ranked number eight in the world. Additionally, the NRHS Science Research soared at the International Genius Olympiad, where we were named the most successful school overall. Congratulations to our robotics program. Despite NRHS being a late entrant into the VEX robotics competition circuit, it cannot go unnoticed that in less than three years, this program has positioned NRHS as one of the leading high schools in New York State's VEX competitions. Congratulations to NRHS for receiving the bronze medal status through college board for exemplary work in increasing student participation, opening access to students, and along with their great test scores. We look forward to sharing more of our school's accomplishments. Now, we will pass our mic to the treasurer and Huguenot Academy representatives, Olivia and Sophia, to jump into our September and October monthly updates.
It seems like forever ago, but the first day of school for all students was September fourth. We were all excited to see our friends reconnect with old teachers and meet our new teachers. During the month of September, our Ignite mentors were in full effect at the start of the year with training and supporting all-school-wide events for the month of September. Our senior class continued the tradition of keeping senior sunrise alive. We woke up at six in the morning to view the sunset at Davenport Park and celebrate a new day as the proud senior class of NRHS. The PTSA and high school partnerships started early with many events so far. They worked together for a successful ninth-grade family night to welcome new families to the high school and get them familiar with administration and expectations. This was a new event for the high school as we looked to provide time for our ninth-grade and new families to ask questions and alleviate their nerves. The PTSA and high school continued their work with a highly-successful senior family night, where the counseling department met with senior families about the college application process, FAFSA, and more. September definitely marked the start of a stressful period for seniors as we tried to balance our course load, exams, and, of course, college applications. We want to give a huge thank, thank you to Ms. Lugovinia Freitas and the counseling department for all the hard work and the jam-packed college visits we had on a daily basis through the opening months. The long month of September continued with Meet the Teacher Night, an opportunity for parents and caregivers to meet the best teaching staff out there. Our Ignite students did a fantastic job helping families find their way in this massive school. September also kicked off the start of the Hispanic Heritage Month celebration. Our Social Studies Department and Library partnered to provide a rich and engaging series of activities from mid-September to October.
October began with our Homecoming in Spirit Week. It was an extremely busy and tiring week, but it was a great start to the month with positive and fun events such as our homecoming dance, pep rally, and homecoming game. We had a blast at our dance. By October, our new ninth-grade class looked like professionals at getting around New Rochelle High School and knew every inch of the building. October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. New Rochelle High School replaces pink, purple with pink to honor this great effort. October began with vaping education. Our SAD club conducted its annual students' assemblies, educating us about the dangers of vaping and smoking marijuana. Johnny's ambassadors visited us from Colorado with a very engaging presentation. Back at it, supporting our school events, the PTSA and high school teachers worked together to host the third annual open house to share with prospective families all the great things the high has, the high school has to offer. We had our annual PSAT and DASSA Day toward, toward the end of October, another huge push in ensuring that we have our Chromebooks and, of course, learning about what it means to create a respectful and safe environment in our schools. Arts Fest was a huge success, so many of us were able to showcase our artwork and talents. And to get into the Halloween spirit, student government hosted a movie night in the Linda E. Kelly Theater. Students signed up to watch A Nightmare Before Christmas. Our PTSA and student government partnered with, for our Halloween, I'm so sorry, partnered for our Halloween costume contest. Our staff and students really showed up and showed their spooky school pride. Many prizes were given away, thanks to the efforts of our PTSA.
November was a back-to-reality month for us, with our counselors pushing us to get our applica, our college applications in, and our teachers encouraging us to finish the marking period off strong. Our annual Project Sale culinary students hosted their brunch this past week ahead of Thanksgiving. We want to congratulate our Project Sale students for all of their achievements. Our PTSA continues to play a huge and pivotal role in our school with Popcorn Fridays and having special muffins and donuts breakfast for our staff on Election Day. With their help, we were able to host our second annual New Road Dines Out Night, where we had participating restaurants donate a part of their proceeds back to our school. We were able to go out and eat with our friends and family without having to worry about any homework or exams, and the best part was that the proceeds went back to our school. We want to thank our PTSA for their continued support of our school and always finding new and innovative ways to help us all out. In the spirit- In the spirit of giving, we are very excited to share that we just finished our sign-up for the upcoming blood drive at New Rochelle High School. The Health Occupations Students of America, or HOSA, club partnered, partnered with the New York Blood Center with a goal of to surpass the 200-plus donations from last year. Finally, the entire community is reminded to attend our annual Pancake Breakfast on November 22nd in the House 4 cafeteria. You're welcome to come enjoy a wonderful, warm breakfast served by our esteemed leadership team. You might even be able to catch Dr. Artiles serving some pancakes, and we know that he'll, he will enjoy this more than flipping burgers and grilling up hot dogs on our annual last day of school celebration on the House 2 Bridge. This concludes the New Rochelle High School updates for the first three months of school. On behalf of the New Rochelle High School, the student government, and the student body as a whole, we want to wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving break. Thank you.
Simply wonderful, how can we follow that? I'm not good, right? Definitely top task I have for us now. So now, I guess I would like to invite the Board of Education to take, take a seat here if you want, and please be careful, the chairs, they have wheels. The kids selected them, remember that. Part of the redesign of the library, we take student input very seriously, and they wanted chairs with wheels. So here they are.
Take your mics with you.
Yeah, we're petrified of those chairs when anyone else other than the students are using them. All right, great. So now, that's, we're gonna start, so thank you again, good evening, everyone, Board of Education Superintendent's School Central Office for the wonderful support. Tonight, we're going to just share with you a little about some of the things that we do here in New Rochelle High School. We were able to see the pinnacle sport, and now you're gonna see the pinnacle of technology and robotics. And it's good to also share that some of those soccer players are also part of our advanced robotics program. So they are shining in many, many fields. So tonight, I just want to also just thank our jazz band for the wonderful job that they did. I mean, Mr. Byers and the kids are amazing, so we want to recognize them again. And we're gonna be learning about our 2025-2026 CRC goal tonight. Our concentration is gonna be about high expectations and rigorous instruction, and we are going to be showcasing our robotics program to sort of connect all those things together. After the presentation, we are going to go into our tenure presentation. Congratulations to all of you that have received tenure, that are here in attendance tonight. We're gonna be recognizing you, and please stick around for a photo, don't run out, we, we need that photo. And then we're gonna go to any questions and answers. So quickly, just going back, just introducing some of the people here. I, I see myself in there, had a lot more hair at that time, a couple of years ago. We have Ms. Amini, Ms. Cadet, our Assistant Principals. We have Ms. Thompson, Ms. Girard, Ms. Nelson, and Ms. Shanley, our House Principals. And continues who's who on New Rochelle High School, we have our Department Chairs. These are the people that are really making it happening in the classroom, that are driving our academic philosophy and making sure that what happens in the classroom matters the most. They keep that going. Ms. Arbola, our English Department Chair, Ms. Gonzalez, Math and Architecture, Mr. Berboza, Business, Social Studies and Business, and Ms. Rivera's Science Department, who by the way, tonight, want to just give her additional praise for the wonderful work that she has done in making sure that our robotics program becomes one of the most successful programs in the state. She's also have the science, one of the best and most recognized science research program around as well. So the Science Department is, is, is firing. It's on fire, the Science Department. We have Ms. Avion, Ms. Avion, Assistant Director for Special Education, Ms. Mayer, Director of Continuing Education, and our newest member of the team, Dr. Marika Nuvio, our Director of the Huguenot Academy, already doing wonderful work out there, we're so happy to have her. As we continue, Mr. Lucero, he's Director of Performing and Visual Arts, Ms. Lugovinia Freitas, Director of Guidance, who is being recognized tonight but was not able to, she's not feeling well, she's not gonna be here. Ms. Reyes Vega, who is Director of Instructional Support, Ms. Rodriguez Gonzalez, Vice of Health and Physical Education, Mr. Donison, Director of Athletics, Mr. Bynum, who, we're still chasing him for a real photo, this guy don't want it. We, one day, we, one day, we're gonna convince him, I don't know when. Director of Security, and another new member, Mr. Mark Couture, Assistant Director of Word Languages. So a little about our demographics, we continue to grow, continue to be strong, groups continue to be stable across the board at the high school. Now, we move into again our priority for the 25-26 school year, which is high expectations and rigorous instruction. And this program, the robotics, and everything that we do at the high school and district Y is aligned to our strategic roadmap, and we have spoken about this before, wanted just to ensure that we understand where, what is the genesis of the amazing work that we're doing. And now, I want to introduce two wonderful teachers, they're gonna, we're gonna be backing for, Ms. Maria Walsh and Mr. Zach Biando. They are the teachers that are really working with the kids in the robotics shop, building robots and creating these wonderful machines to go and beat as many people as we can. Ms. Walsh, come on.
To move this slide, you gotta press the down arrow. Great. Thank you, Dr. Artiles. So I'm gonna talk to you about our robotics program, and thank you to the Board of Education and the New Rochelle School District. You do not understand how amazing this program is. If you go out and you take a look, I'll explain in a few minutes. This program is extremely unique. I don't know if you understand that. We are teaching them engineering skills, and the Introduction to Robotics course, there is no other program like it in a high school, not in Westchester, and as far as we can tell, not across the country. That might be a little bit too broad. There are some private schools that do this type of thing, but not in a public school. So this is a huge deal. Our enrollment has been growing, and I'll explain a little bit about that in a few minutes. This program meets and exceed any community expectation that you should have, and it's a testament to the high expectations that we have here. Okay. So what's happening in these classes, a lot. There's a lot of industry-relevant discussions that are happening in here, some really high-level things. Even in our introduction classes, the application-oriented, kids are coding, they come in, some of them, some of them know how to code. Some of them are like, I don't understand what that is, but after a while, they really appreciate, it's another language. It's a language that I don't necessarily understand at the beginning, but there are so many different programs out there, like blocks that are very straightforward, they really understand it after a while. It's very straightforward. They're doing engineering design, they're building, and they're learning from their mistakes. Who would have liked that opportunity when they were younger? Building opportunity is very immersive. They're in there, they're cutting, they're designing, they're putting things together, they're failing, they're redesigning, they're using things they've never used before. It's a really good test experience, and they're ready for college, trade schools, and jobs. So our program has grown rapidly from inception about five years ago, from an Introduction to Robotics class to a full pathway, and you can see what that is. The program is attracting families back into the district and into this school. So we had an experience where we were doing a, you know, welcome to New Rochelle High School from the community, and I had a parent who, I can quote, "potential incoming freshman", we weren't considering the high school as an alternative for our child, but based on everything that we've seen, we are seriously considering it now. There are, this program and the science research, et cetera, are ones that they were really impressed about, so kudos to the community. Okay, so as students go into the robotics competitions, both in-house, and we are gonna have our first competition here at the high school in January, in the middle of January, and at competitive schools, and at competing schools, they're becoming more comfortable defending their ideas. That's an extremely difficult thing to do. This is my idea, here's what I think about it, and here's how I defend it. There's no better program to showcase these students' engineering skills. There are so many different outcomes that are listed here, and you can read them yourselves, but these students are really acquiring engineering skills. I'm gonna give this back to Dr. Artiles.
Thank you, Ms. Walsh. And as we move on, Ms. Walsh alluded to some of the data. I want just to point out two data points here for you guys, so that way you can sort of see, at the bottom, the total of 24, 25, 25, 26, we, this is where the program itself, the way that we know it is, has been functioning. So we went from 76 in the 24-25 school year, now to 134 in the 25-26 school year. Another data point that I would like to, to really highlight is the fact that 59% of our students in the 25-20, 24-25 school year are free and reduced lunch student, participating, creating this cutting-edge education and learning this highly complex technological AI and, and everything together. And that continues to grow, as you can see, for 25-26, it is 61%. So still, the majority of the members of our robotics program are also are free and reduced lunch students, which speaks volumes, that the resources that we're providing to this family, that otherwise, they, we only have access in a private setting, is beyond. It's, it's just something that, it is unheard. And when people come and they visit and they see, they're pleasantly surprised to see what we have, and those parents seeing their kids competing, later on, you can just walk around, there's a competition field, that is, that we're one of the few school that possesses that type of equipment. Then we have some of our elementary schools in here, also showcasing their work. So it is wonderful to have the resources and the support from the Board, the Superintendent, and the community to make sure that we make this, make this happen. Now, I would like to introduce Mr. Zach Biando.
All right. Hello, my name is Zach Biando. I just wanna start off by introducing myself, I'm a physics teacher here at the high school. And just prefacing this by saying, I started out teaching intro robotics in 2019. It was just one class at that time, and at that time, when they asked me to start teaching it, we didn't have any equipment for the first few months. I was having them build wooden bridges out of balsa wood, designing things in Autodesk Inventor, and it was Rica Laveras who was the one who got us the equipment we needed when we were starting, so I just wanna thank her for that. And as the years progressed, because of that, we have now expanded intro robotics to four sections. I teach two of them, so I really wanna thank her for that. Anyways, so, the structure, that's what we start out with. So I like to tell parents that during Meet the Teacher Night, those that come, that their days of assembling IKEA furniture are over. Their kids are gonna be able to assemble the IKEA furniture for them. They're gaining the skills to get their hands in tight places, screws, nuts, build things without, without instructions often, okay? So they're, they're, they're building structure like this, they're building robots like this, small, basic robots, and the idea is, it is their entrance, intro robotics is their entrance into a pathway that leads to advanced robotics, leads to the robotics club and competing, okay? Anyways, so then we move on to learning how to program. We start out with no prerequisites. I have a lot of freshmen in the class. We start off programming in Scratch or Blocks. Right now, they're playing a freeze tag game against each other, where they've programmed the robots to freeze when their bumper button is pressed, and they're controlling them with the joysticks. It moves on later into the year into programming in Python to help them transition into advanced robotics. So we learn how to use sensors, right now, we're using the bumper switch. The idea is sense, plan, act with robotics. The robot has to sense things in its environment, make decisions, and follow through in the program and carry out a course of actions. Then they learn how to use things like distance sensors, they learn how to build mechanisms like catapults, intakes, things to solve a problem, that's really what it is. And my students don't have to become a mechanical engineer. What they learn is how to solve a problem, and that can be used in any, any field, any career. I have students who do what I don't expect them to do. I'll give you an example, I have a student who's in Bosse's Autotech, and he built a rack-and-pinion steering system for the robot, which is brilliant, and he built that on its own, he was very convinced he wanted to build it, because he spends his days working on cars, and he wanted to build something like that on the robot. Now, I wanna pass things off to Maria Walsh. I started with the one intro robotics class, but when she came to New Rochelle High School, she expanded the program a lot, okay? She, she fought tooth and nail to get more students in the classes, more equipment for the students. She went to all these robotics competitions with me, and we were there from 7:00 in the morning to 7:00 PM often. If the kids did really well, the later we had to stay, unfortunate for us, but good for them. So she puts a lot of time and effort into this, okay? Thank you.
So I'm gonna speak to you about our advanced classes, and we have two of them. And our, this isn't the only thing we do with our Advanced Robotics 1 class, they compete, but think this. Everyone knows about self-driving cars? The complexity of them. So with self-driving cars, a lot of sensors, so you saw what Zach had showcased. These sensors are much more advanced, very interesting. Last year, I had a student who was using calculus with one of the sensors. That's how advanced, so he's running some calculus programs in the sensor to have it anticipate what they want it to do on the field. So really advanced, it's amazing opportunity. So it was giving our robots the ability to see where they were and the surroundings. If you can see the field over there, it has a lot of little black and white marks around it, the sensors can read the field, so it knows which direction it's facing within the field, and it can make decisions based on that. Really fascinating thing. So in our Advanced Robotics 2, some of the things that we emphasize are game strategy, it's huge. In the next level of course, we have to make moves that are aspects of engineering that are involved. Game strategy is a huge portion of it. They have to anticipate, anticipate what their competition is doing, and they have to be, do it better. They analyze game footage from other robots, and they try and anticipate what they might have to do. They can switch out parts on their robot and anticipate, I'm going into a match with this robot and these competitors, so we're gonna switch it out to something else. And they're really trying to outsmart their opponents on the field and whoever their person is, who they're working with. They use a lot of computer-aided design software, so prototyping is extremely important. I don't know if anyone's tried to use like Legos, et cetera, however, you can put something together. Legos are easy, you just take them apart and you put them back together. With these, we're cutting, we're putting things together with screws and nuts, and we're putting glue in them so they don't come apart. It's not that easy to do. So what do you need to learn? You've gotta be able to computer-aid design. That's going to give you the ability to predetermine a very powerful design to minimize any misplaced cuts, so the parts are cut correctly, and have a perfect fit, so that when you build it, it's ready to go. It minimizes your time to be able to do that. And so, handing this back to Dr. Artiles. Thank you.
All right, so as we continue, we are not just keeping this knowledge and skills limited to the high school, we do like to share knowledge. So the program Outreach Robotics, we're so happy that we got the support from our district and Ms. Reyes, for, to expand a summer program where we run a E&amp;L-focused component that sort of focuses on vocabulary, reading, and writing. reading, and writing, but at the same time, also teaching our future E&amp;L students engineering processes and basic structure and programming. This program was part of our Summer Stars program, so we're looking forward to continuing that partnership. Our very co-alignment of our Robotics Honor Society with the elementary school, the elementaries and the middle school, we're going to continue to provide those opportunities to the early grades to learn about the different levels of robotics, so that way they're ready to sort of move on to the Lego level. And then when they come to us, they can make an easy transition to the VEX robotics. And you, we see some of them here tonight, some of our elementary schools, robotic students are here, because they want to see what is going to happen to them in the next seven years. They're getting ready now. So this is just wonderful. The power, we're building a pipeline that is going to keep the program alive and healthy for generations to come. As we continue, the benefits of the program, what it's providing to our students, definitely it is teaching them about software, about on shape or AutoCAD, Fusion, coding, artificial intelligence. These robots, where they win and lose is in the quality of the software that is built by the school. The machine itself is wonderful, the hardware, but the hardware needs to be smart. So whenever it is that we go and we win, what is really doing the winning is the quality of the software that was built in-house by the student. So that is critical. It's forcing the student to stem jobs in the future, as we know how expansive it is, aviation, the auto industry, and all the engineering-oriented jobs. We're also going to allow the students to get that certification that they also want to use. And as we continue, just to share a little bit here, to the right, I would like just to concentrate quickly on that. As you can see, this is just not only a pastime for the student, they're also doing extremely well. The majority of our students are mastering the courses in the passing rate, so we want to continue that output. Some of the benefit for the elementary school students that are here tonight, they've been, they're currently working on Dash Robotics, or Wipro. The middle school, they're working on the Lego League, sort of preparing that pipeline so when they come to us. And Student Voice, right, I will not read these, but I will let you just read some of these comments by our students. It is wonderful, basically, to see our students giving their feedback. And some of the next steps is, of course, we want to expand the E&amp;L piece to advanced level, and we also want to introduce another component, Summer Star, for our student with disabilities this upcoming summer. And mentorship support, we're always looking for that. We have connected with multiple community organizations, the Engineering Society, and other areas to support our students. And of course, always having our students come back to just give us that support. And now, we're going to transition. That is the end of our robotics presentation. We're going to transition quickly to just, to recognize our tenure receivers tonight, Ms. Aminia and Ms. Kadet. They're going to help us with that, and then we go to the Q and A.
Thank you.
Eight minutes.
Eight minutes, okay. All righty. Good evening, everyone. All right. So we are very excited to announce our team members that achieved tenure this year. A remarkable group of educators. Their dedication, talent, and commitment has helped, has helped shape our school community. They each bring something unique, whether it's through their years of experience, their perspectives, or simply their innovation. They truly are one of a kinds, and they pour so much into our students and our community. To each of our members receiving tenure, we're very happy for you. You have made our school a better place, and we thank you for your commitment to our school and students. We look forward to seeing what the future holds for you. Congratulations. So we will begin. If your name is called and you are in the audience, please stand up. You're going to receive your certificate, and then there is a group photo at the end, so don't, please try not to run out. All right, first up, I know she's been waiting, five years in education. Mrs. Baum is consistently recognized by her students as a teacher who creates a warm and inviting environment. Her lessons always allow for students to access the content and offer multiple levels of support to meet the needs of every single student. Her instruction is always differentiated to support students who may struggle, who may have language challenges, or even students who work above grade level. A quote she lives by comes from Albert Einstein, "Education is not the learning of facts, but the training of the mind to think." Come on up, Kristin. Yeah, I know, but you're gonna, you're gonna, thank you. Mr. Green, George Green, I don't believe he's here. He may be at track practice. So Mr. Green is a graduate of New Rochelle High School. He has been an educator for the last 14 years in New Rochelle and also coaches track. Mr. Green is dedicated to our life skills students and works with them to help them become successful and more independent. His students would say that he's very detail-oriented, caring, firm yet fair, and that he's always fun to be around with. Congratulations. Next up, we have Ms. La Pagula, one of our special education teachers. She's here, has been in education for 13 years. She's worked effectively with a variety of co-teachers to make sure that the academic needs of every student are met. It's evident that the needs and strengths of all students, including students with an IEP, are taken into consideration for the planning and delivery of her lessons. Her students would say she makes the learning engaging by relating to them and creating a space where they're welcome to speak freely and be themselves. Congratulations, Elise. Uh oh. Do this. Okay. Next up, we have Ms. Milanif. In today's social studies classrooms, it's important to prepare students for higher-level thinking, problem-solving, and collaborative skills. These attributes are frequently observed in her classroom at Huguenot Academy. Her students would call her the OG and share that she does her best to help them make sense of a world that seems too crazy to understand most of the time. Congratulations, Megan. Ms. Musto's dedication to the New Rochelle school community extends beyond her role as a chemistry teacher. She's the advisor of National Honor Society and has opened up access for so many students to be inducted as members of the Honor Society. In this role, she's created extra help sessions for student athletes so that they are able to find support with their course load. She has always demonstrated she's a team player and is always looking to help others. A quote she lives by in her professional work is from Henry Ford, "The only real mistake is the one from which we learn nothing." Congratulations, Gabby. Next up, we have Kyla Rogers. Ms. Rogers has been an ELA teacher for the last 10 years. She's a committed and reflective practitioner. She served as an active member of both the ELA and E&amp;L curriculum teams, contributing to her insight to the ongoing development and alignment of curriculum. Her contributions exemplify professionalism always and a deep commitment to equity and student achievement. A quote she lives by is, "No significant learning can occur without a significant relationship." Congratulations, Kyla.
Good evening. Mr. Rosado worked hard to promote a learning environment that acknowledges and respects the cultural diversity and strengths of our learning community. His involvement with organizations such as My Brothers Keeper and Higher Ames enriches the lives of so many young men at New Rochelle High School. His students would say he has tons of energy, is always positive, and creates an inclusive environment. Mr. Rosado is also one of our teacher leaders who runs our community circles with colleagues during faculty meetings. Congratulations. With 21 years in education, Ms. Joanna Sanchez is praised for her knowledge of content, professionalism, and desire to deliver quality lessons that are engaging, interesting, and rich in resources and content. Her efforts to make the CTE and marketing a reality for our students are noticed and appreciated. Her students would say Ms. Sanchez is like a mom, caring, supportive, but also structured and firm when needed. A quote she lives by in her professional work is, "Structure gives students stability. Compassion gives the courage." Congratulations, Ms. Sanchez. Gina Suma Egan. Ms. Suma Egan has been an educator for 26 years. She's a selfless person who always puts her students first, and she always has a great school spirit, especially on Halloween. Her students would say she is happy, kind, patient, and a great listener. Ms. Suma Egan is always supporting her students in taking their needs into consideration so they feel safe to take risks in class. One quote she lives by from Roy Bennett is, "Be mindful, be grateful, be positive, be true, and be kind." Congratulations. I don't believe Ms. Tuall is here. But with 30 years in education, Ms. Tuall is a caring, understanding teacher who wants each student to do their very best. She knows how to differentiate instruction to ensure that students grow in their mathematical knowledge. She's always there to listen and lend a hand to students and colleagues alike. Her students would say she cares about them and wants to see them succeed. Congratulations, Diane Tuall. And last, but certainly not least, Kimberly Warwick. Ms. Warwick has 16 years of educational experience and is a creative and dedicated teacher who works in our Life Skills Program. She finds a variety of ways to engage students with hands-on activities to help them learn, have fun in the process, and promote their self-confidence. A quote Ms. Warwick lives by is from Walt Whitman, "Be curious, not judgmental." Congratulations, Ms. Warwick.
Thank you so much. And now, to conclude, we have three administrators also tonight that I'd like to recognize. Ms. Marine Avion. And Ms. Avion, what we, is incredible to have it, with 37 years of educational experience, Assistant Director of Special Education. Ms. Avion has helped enhance our Special Education Department. She's a true advocate for students with disabilities, and is a firm believer that all students can and will succeed. Her students would say that she's firm but always fair, and that she truly cares about them. A professional quote that she leads by is, "Every child is a different kind of flower, and altogether make this world beautiful garden." Ms. Avion. The next person I'd like to recognize is Ms. Valerie Kadet Simkins. With over 25 years of experience in education, Assistant Principal, Ms. Kadet, has contributed so much to our New Rochelle community. Ms. Kadet works in the areas of creating a more inclusive academic experience for our students, has opened the door for students to experience advanced placement, dual enrollment courses, and other areas of high rigor. Moreover, Ms. Kadet has dedicated tremendous amount of energy to creating and supporting a welcoming and affirming environment in our classrooms. Students would say that Ms. Kadet is welcoming, warm, and we give you, we give it to you straight. A quote that she leads by from Nelson Mandela is, "Education is the most powerful weapon which can use to change the world." Ms. Kadet, congratulations. And Ms. Leah Lugavina, who couldn't make it tonight, but I would just recognize her as well. She's a Director of Guidance. With 28 years of experience in education, Ms. Freiter has transformed the counseling department to ensure students come first and that counselors have significant time getting to know their students. Part of this work has led to the increase of students' counselor face time and in-person interactions. Her patient kindness and compassion towards everyone she interacts with is one to, not, is one of the things that defines her. We're all grateful for that. A quote that she leads by is, "I am only one, but I am one. I can do everything. I cannot do everything, but I can do something. And I will not let what I cannot do interfere with what I can do." Congratulations, Ms. Lugavina Freiter. And this concludes our presentation for tonight. We'll stay here for any questions, any, so thank you. Yes, you guys can go do the tenure photo. Congratulations, everyone.
So before, thank you very much to the team. Before we transition, if we could have just a moment, what I would like to offer is while we are having, bless you, while we're having our photos taken, I would like for the rest of the audience to please spend some time taking a look at the robotics in action. So we'll take about five minutes and walk around and see our students. And I would like to highlight, not because, you know, I have a favorite, but I am a former first grade and kindergarten teacher, so early elementary works for me. Come take a look at our future New Rochelle High School students and the work that they have done. So we'll take about five minutes to do that, and we'll reconvene for questions and answers at 8:20. Okay, at this time, we're going to begin to reconvene at our seats for the question At this time, we ask all board members to please come back to our seats for our questions
Never going to get them back down. Down, the next one.
And as we start to come back to our seats,
Maria, Zach and Maria, can you guys come up?
So while some of our community members are still engaging with our students and the robots, we will continue with our question and answer portion at this time. So I will turn it over to our Vice President, Louis, to guide us through this.
Thank you, Dr. Reynolds. First and foremost, congratulations to every one of our recipients of tenure. Very well deserved. And a special shout out to La Paglia. We graduated together and were running up and down the basketball courts back in the day. So I love to see all the graduates come back to New Rochelle and teach in New Rochelle and get tenure here and stay. So I appreciate the hard work and thank you for the presentations. For --
It's going to be hard. I know, I'm sorry.
No, no, you're fine. For the presentation, absolutely fantastic. I myself was a student that really loved chemistry, and I think one of my biggest regrets in college was not going into organic chem more heavily in high school. So any push to get students into STEM is a big check for me, and so I'm all for expanding this program for as many students that would like to participate. And so with that, I will let my colleagues ask any questions before I return to the mic. You want any questions or comments? Ms. Claire Fernandez?
Hold it. Oh, hi. I don't have a question. I am absolutely blown away and astounded. And this is, to see this and to see the different ages and everybody so excited and hearing the kids present, this was absolutely phenomenal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you everyone for all your hard work.
Thank you. Really appreciate it.
Ms. Vega?
Just as a congratulation to all the staff that got recognized today, appreciate all of the work and all the years that they put in devoted to students. I also want to really say I appreciate all of the information regarding the robotics course. It was great. It's something that I definitely wished I had that opportunity when I was in school. So to see that happening now and to see everybody really into it is really inspiring. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Williams? Great, thank you. And congratulations to all of the tenure recipients. Well deserved. Also, I would like to ditto my board colleagues. I feel that I'm a Gen Xer, so I'm the -- I was born in the last of the old times. And when I attended New Rochelle High School, I learned how to put together an entertainment center with the old kind of non-mechanical technology, like wood shop, metal shop, that kind of thing. And, you know, I was just like really happy to hear about the connection now with the maker spaces where students are actually putting things together and also using technology together. So it's very important to be able to put things together and to use technology. And I was really happy to hear that we're using industry-standard programs. So, you know, it's helping our students to be world-class students, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
So if I may, just to acknowledge the level of excellence that takes place at our flagship school. All roads lead to New Rochelle High School here in the New Rochelle City School District. It's also important to notice that the learning experience is not the textbook, isolated, siloed type of learning that is the experience of many of us who are in this room. Our learning on a daily basis is becoming more integrated. It's becoming more real-world applicable. It's becoming more industry-driven, and it is most especially becoming almost college-level experience, if not is college-level experience. When you take a look at our course catalog, when you take a look at the lineage of what is offered here at the high school specifically for robotics, I will say it rivals many colleges, particularly our local colleges, surpasses many college offerings. That is something that we should not only be proud of, that is something we should wear on our chest, on our head, everywhere else, because New Rochelle is leading the way. So I'd like to thank, most especially our two teachers, for your vision, for your dedication, for your non-ceasing asking for more, because it's translating into opportunities of engagement, opportunities of instruction for our students that we could not predict. So thank you to the high school, and thank you to all of the teachers here on a daily basis who makes that experience available for all of our students. So let's give the high school a round of applause.
Oh, okay, great. Thank you so much. Good night, everyone.
Yes, evening.
And you are actually invited to the shop one day. You really want to drive the robots for a while. Let us know. We set up a date and a time for you to come and really just have some fun.
Thank you very much for that offer. It's not open to everybody. But no, just joking. So please, an opportunity to explore in the learning here is available to our community members. As we transition to our next presentation, Madam Vice President, thank you for the indulgence. This was happenstance, but it is a kind of kismet that we are presenting to you an update about our AI policy. In particular, the steps that we have taken to engage segments of our community, segments of our age ranges, segments of the individuals who will either be making policy around it, recommending policy around it, or be the recipients of the policy and how they've come together to provide some information and reflection for us as we continue down this pathway. Artificial intelligence is not a static thing. Artificial intelligence is something that is evolving on almost an hour-by-hour basis. In order for us to really put in place provisions that are going to allow us to continue to be cutting-edge, we need to have a clear understanding of where we are, where we would like to go, and most especially of what we don't know. So with that, I'm going to turn the microphone over to our Assistant Superintendent for Business and Administration, Carlos Leal, and to Ms. Joy Chimera, our Assistant Director for Technology, who's going to give us a brief update on where we are with the development of our AI policy.
Good evening. To our Vice President, Louis, and board members and our community, we have a very short presentation for you tonight, and we did that intentionally because today we're just basically providing an update. So to provide you a little bit of context, process, and next steps, everything that we do, again, is in service to our mission, vision, equity statement, and our whole child approach. And so keeping that in mind, that's the background for this, as well as the strategic roadmap. What we want to share with you guys tonight is basically the policy development process that we've undertaken, and so Joy will share with you the process we've taken thus far. And just want to make sure to mention, we do not currently have a policy. This is the initial steps that we're currently taking to get to a policy.
Thank you. I'm just going to turn this way so I can look at the screen. So under the direction of Dr. Reynolds, we took a look at the NISBA AI policy and used that as the foundation of a draft policy that you will soon be reading. In collaboration with CNI, with Dr. Roberts and Dr. Craco, we really gave that policy some teeth, added to it, really made it our own, again, making sure that we were taking into consideration the mission and vision of our district. So we then collaborated also with our union representatives and created a policy committee so that we can start working on this. The purpose of the committee was to develop a draft AI policy for board approval regarding the use of artificial intelligence in the district as a means of increasing efficiency, enhancing teaching and learning, and promoting innovation as we continue to prepare our students to thrive in a dynamic, technology-driven world. The key thing that we wanted to make sure everyone understood is that AI, as Dr. Reynolds says, it's here, it's moving, it's moving fast, and it's really in every aspect of what we do. So it's not just for students, it's not just for teachers, it's not just for staff, it's for everybody. And so whether it be people who are working in an office, clerical staff, to support staff, to the teachers as they plan their lessons, to how we instruct our students, it's going to permeate everywhere. So our policy really needed to be something that oversaw it all and made sure that we set up the guardrail so that when we do introduce it into the district, that we're doing it So prior to the launch meeting in February, we got together to really give that policy its teeth, and we presented then the policy to our committee, again, as a draft, just kind of thinking about it. We then worked with them to revise and edit it. We cross-referenced it with other policies that we have in place just to make sure that nothing was in -- nothing contradicted anything. Everything, want to make sure, is supporting one another as we're moving a new policy forward. From now or through November, we've been also gaining some feedback, and Carlos will talk a little bit about those sessions because they've been actually great, going out into the community and addressing all of our different constituents to get some feedback on the draft policy that the committee created. Then our goal is to present our draft policy to the Board Policy Committee, to then bring it to you to vote on, to then determine our next steps. We're hoping that we can get started on our administrative regulation development in March, work on that through June, to then determine how we can start implementing it in September. Obviously, along with the policy, this roadmap is also a draft, and we will go as need be, but this is our hope as we move forward. So one of the things that was really difficult for all of us to kind of wrap our brains around was the difference between a board policy and the administrative regulations. And so we wanted to continually remind all of the people on our committee, as well as the constituent groups that we met with, to really differentiate between the two, because everyone, especially people who are in the trenches, immediately when you read something, they want to know, well, how are we going to do this? And we had to keep rolling back and kind of taking a step back and say, that's not for now, right? The policy is just going to help us understand what this is, what this is, the parameters that we're going to work under. Once that gets approved, then we're going to dig in and roll up our sleeves and really develop those administrative regulations, which will help us figure out the day-to-day operations and how we're going to implement the policy. So if you think about it as like a map, the policy is the map. It's the big picture. It's like, okay, I want to go to England, but then the AR, the administrative regulation, is going to be those step-by-step directions that are going to tell us how we're actually going to get there. And so then that leads us to our next steps, which we've been working through.
Again, we're at the infant stage of this, but we've already begun to engage various stakeholders. So we met with PTAC one night, and we workshopped through the draft policy and received some fantastic feedback, as well as great questions for us to bring back to the committee. We also engaged with district administrators at various meetings. Thank you to Mary Claire. I'm going to say shout out because she's helped us get the word out to few members, and we had a fantastic conversation around the use of AI in instruction and how it could be served as a tool. And then again, more administrators across the system. And then we met yesterday, not met yesterday, was it yesterday? Maybe it was yesterday, Tuesday, with student government here at the high school. And that was a fantastic discussion and insight from our youth and getting to hear student voice in all of this, which has, I think, is just going to breathe so much life into this policy. And so we also wanted to share with the community that on December 2nd, we will also now have a general open public conversation and go through the same process of, here's the draft. and go through the same process of, here's the draft policy. Provide us some input for anyone in our community to come and share so that we can then bring that back to the committee as a whole. And then the committee, the AI Policy Committee, will meet on December 9th. So we'll make sure to take all the notes and all the ideas and ideas and bring that to that group on that day. And so just a public shout out to that committee for their engagement. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. Any of my colleagues have any comments or questions?
I just have a comment. Thank you for this introduction to AI policy. You're marrying some of the things that I really enjoy. Policy, educational leadership and governance, and AI. And I consider myself to be a first adapter of AI as I use it in my academic work and also in my professional practice. I just gave a presentation on ethical AI usage in embedding the international baccalaureate primary years learner profiles into our units that we write together as a team. And you know, I find that with the AI embedding, using AI to embed the learner profiles into our units, it's things that we did anyway, but it just took us a long time to do it. You know, it took us, you know, months to do it. But now with AI, with the right prompts, we're able to get the work done a lot quicker. And it's done, you know, within minutes, actually. But you know, it's fortunate that we had that experience of really taking that time and really thinking and working together and thinking about what we want the students to know and are we asking them the correct questions. So we did that work before and AI just helps us to do it quicker. And we just really need to be able to teach our students to be able to do that thought process too, instead of just, you know, presenting a document or producing a document or producing a piece of work without having, have had the time to have the discussion and the conversations. So thank you very much for this introduction. It's very exciting and is something to be embraced, I believe.
As you move along, sorry. Do you move along with this process of AI development? How involved will you keep the students? And at what point will we hear their voices on the matter?
Well, we've already started to hear student voices and what we promised the group was to come back once we have a better draft, again, to hear their voice. And then when we start designing the regulations, also have some say in that process, so, throughout.
So I want to thank the team for picking up the mantle and getting us to where we are currently. We had a brief conversation just in passing with a couple of the board members and the interest in AI is ramping up, so this is very timely. So thank you very much.
Thank you all. The next section of our report is our liaison reports. Do any of our members have anything to add?
Yes, I do. I had the opportunity on November 19th to attend the Regional Superintendent Board Dinner and Symposium of the Westchester-Putnam School Boards Association. And the presentation was about AI. So it's AI everywhere. And basically, I have some notes. Students are already using AI, as we all know. Banning or ignoring it is ineffective. Being with the, we need to begin with a community-aligned, age-appropriate framework that gives teachers clear, consistent guidance for K-12 students rather than dropping products into the classroom unprepared. And also, we need to prioritize professional development so educators can design lessons that teach when and how to use AI responsibly. We need to redesign assessment practices, move beyond grading only for final products and require process evidence. So with AI, you can get a document really quickly, but doesn't prove, or it doesn't show the thinking that went behind it. So it's important to look at every step of the process, not just the end product. And so the School Boards Association is really looking at AI and it's an ongoing conversation and how we can use it ethically and how we can embrace it because it's here to stay. I, on October 20th, I attended the Westchester-Putnam School Boards Association New Voices Network. And we had a discussion about dealing with conflict within the board and with the public. And we were introduced to a strategy called the SCARF model of social threat and reward. And with the SCARF model, the S stands for status, the C is certainty, A is automaticity, R is relatedness, and F is fairness. Model that can be used to deal with conflict on the board. And on October 27th, I attended a Westchester-Putnam School Boards Association Advocacy Group meeting. And an advocacy group focused on New York State public education is prioritizing legislative goals for the upcoming year, including and securing consistent foundation aid funding, improving BOSI's funding by raising the salary cap and enhancing student well-being through initiatives like special acts and attempting to amend the cell phone ban. The group also plans to advocate for school districts to have the ability to comment on charter school applications and address concerns about the New York City charter school application process compared to the state process. And you can get more information on the NYSBA website. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Any of the colleagues have anything to add? Okay. Okay, so next up on our agenda is our public comment. I'm going to read a statement first and then call the first speaker. Ladies and gentlemen, we are about to convene into the public comment period of the meeting. The Board of Education adopted policy 1230 in April 2022 to ensure all members of the public have the opportunity to speak at both of our board meetings each month. We believe it is crucial for us to hear from our community members about their concerns and issues. Having said that, thank you. Please know that the board is here to listen. The public comment period is not designed to be a discussion. Accordingly, understand the board will not respond to your concerns and questions tonight. We take your concerns and questions seriously and want to have sufficient time to process and research issues if need be. We will, however, respond to your questions and concerns at a future meeting or have the proper staff member get back to you at the appropriate time. I also want to point out that under state and federal privacy laws, we are unable to entertain any comments or questions about school personnel and students. Please know, however, that we take personal concerns very seriously. On these matters, we would ask you to go through the appropriate administrative channels. Finally, we recognize that right now, our nation and our community are polarized on a number of issues. That said, we want our school board meetings to serve as an example to our students that members of our school board and members of our community can deal with controversial issues in a silver manner and demonstrate mutual respect for one another. In that spirit, we will insist that all of our speakers and members of the audience maintain civility and respect for any divergent views that others possess. We ask that speakers please address their comments with the board directly, rather than the audience. In the unlikely event the meeting becomes unruly, the board will recess the meeting and return once order has been restored. Finally, I want to remind everyone that you may submit written comments to the board, in lieu of speaking during the public comment period, if you so choose. Tonight, we have set aside 45 minutes for public comments, where each speaker who has signed up before 3:30 PM today has three minutes to speak. If a person requests to speak after 3:30, speakers may sign up in person at the meeting with the clerk and will be afforded the opportunity to speak during the public comment period if time permits. Our first speaker of the night is Mr. Vincent Maltano.
Hello, good evening. A couple of things. As we come close to the Thanksgiving holiday, I'd like to once again remind the board and anybody else who's listening of the horrible decision to make a political gesture some years ago to celebrate Indigenous people, which is nice, out of 365 days of the year, with Columbus Day, merely to make a political point. It makes you look small doing things like that and hateful, which is unnecessary. You don't need to hate. There are other ways to celebrate Indigenous people or Native Americans. The day after Thanksgiving, which is coming up right now, is a day that celebrates, at least initially, the joining of the Wampanoag peoples and the pilgrims, some 90 Native peoples and 52 pilgrims who survived after the first year, celebrated a three-day feast. They had a peace treaty. Many of the Wampanoag had died from diseases brought over earlier, which is kind of an odd story. And they were being attacked by another Native tribe, the Narragansett. And so they wanted to form an alliance with the pilgrims for their own protection. And they did, and it was a celebratory event, which led to our Thanksgiving, which is a federal and state holiday, as is Columbus Day. As you know, Indigenous Peoples' Day is not a national holiday, nor is it a state holiday, but it's your political holiday. And that's really unfortunate. The day after Thanksgiving is a day to teach of how love and hate can exist sometimes close to each other. As the Treaty of Celebration in 1621 soon broke down to Philip's War, with the Native peoples being attacked by the very settlers that they had broken bread with, so-called. If you want to teach history, as I did for 40 years in the high schools of New York City, let's do it honestly and leave your politics aside. It's really an ugly thing you've done. Do you have the courage to discuss it? Oh, and by the way, the cell phone ban policy, it's too bad the students aren't here, says that you can confiscate a kid's phone, but your own policy says if you guys lose or break it, you don't have to pay for it. Does anybody have the courage to talk about that? It's a sad day, but happy Thanksgiving and happy Native Americans' Day.
Are there any other speakers this evening? Ms. DeSime?
I'll give you this after. Hi, everybody. Miriam DeSime. So great presentation tonight, robotics. My son took robotics the very first class of 2019. They only had like one computer for like five or six of them. So it's great to see the advancement and how good it is. And I love the program. He's now electrical engineer, graduated in '21, working with GE in Pittsburgh. He's in Florida troubleshooting systems, sheet-making machines, all kinds of things. And it's all part of what he learned here. So I'm a fan. I love it. I saw that you have like a starter program in the summer for only E&amp;L students. I think they're going to expand it to students with disabilities. I say expand it to all students. That's a great opportunity in the summer. Why are we limiting? I asked. They said, well, that's who's funding it. So let's get funding so that all students can take this in the eighth grade or before the ninth grade. That, I think it's great. So the other thing that I saw on this, of course, whenever I look at these demographics, I am shocked by the fact that in the high school, the white population in our town, when I looked at the last census, I saw both like 40% and a 50% or 51%. I wasn't sure why they had two different numbers, but that's what they are. But somehow, we have a population of white students in the school now that's only 18%. I graduated from this school. That wasn't our population. We got to ask ourselves, why? Why are we this low? To me, this is a failure. That we have a great school system, but why is it that we have such a disparity in our population and representation in the school district? That's something that we got to work on. So that was one. The other thing, you did a tenure today. It's great to see all these folks. I want to speak on the fact that there are a lot of folks that we have in our district that are from New Rochelle. Some are not from New Rochelle, that we have lost. And we've lost them because even though your strategic roadmap talks about superb staff and treating your staff with dignity and value, we are failing miserably with this because Ms. Cornelius, Donna Jackson, Dr. Campbell, or some of the Shadia Alvarez are people that should still be here. My cousin who worked in the food lunchroom, and he worked hard to get into that position. Five years, three years, you know, part-time, eventually five years finding full-time. You guys said, oh, he was, you know, abusing time, just bogusly. How are we handling this? We really need to take a look at that. Thank you.
Anyone else for coming public comment this meeting? Okay, I see no takers. And so with that, I just like to let the public know that our next meeting is on Thursday, December 4th at City Hall. Colleagues, can I have a motion any second to adjourn the meeting?
Second, Williams.
Thank you. No favor, any opposed? Motion carries. We will see you.